Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Krakenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie is absent.
Two, two, or three speakers? Looks like three. Bob Seibert, we'll start with you, Bob.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Last Monday night, you stated one issue, which is Item C on tonight's. However, last week, you stated that this would be installed in Irene Schmidt Park. I am not against the pop-up scenario. I am against placing this in Irene Schmidt Park. Irene Schmidt Park on Warrenville Road and Second Street is by far the best park in Warrenville. It has an excellent scale of features, which has the trees being spread across the property, a riverbed on its side, and this simplistic design of framing the Warren Tavern and the Warren Museum. Add to this the name of the woman who wrote a book on the early days of Warrenville, and we have quite a delight. But this property also signifies historical information for Warrenville. In 1838, Leonard Store built two identical two-story buildings with hands-on timbers, one for a store, the other for his family living. At this time also, the Warrenville Tavern was farther up the hill where the Walgreens is today. Colonel Warner and Leonard would compete for the post office job yearly. Also, at this property, where it's the beginning of Warrenville, it was the last stop on a stagecoach route, bringing the needed drinkers to the tavern and the customers for the store. In 1991, a citizen offered to purchase the Leonard Building and invest $100,000, turning it into an artist and residency program. The city of Warrenville tore it down. The sister building stands today 187 years from its birth, and it is on Winfield Road with a small addition. This park is a combination of natural beauty and history, framing our Warren Tavern and the Warren Museum. The riverbank and the parkland with ties this possibility to a picture of Warrenville in 1838. Pop-up sheds do not belong in this park. There are more appropriate locations for these sheds. I have identified three. Installation of pop-up sheds will make this beautiful park look like a homeless shelter.
Thank you, Bob. As a point of correction, it's Leon Schmidt. Irene, I don't know, not Irene, but it's Leon Schmidt Park for future reference. And anybody watching on TV, you're obviously seeing this, but this meeting will be in its traditional fashion, and anybody can watch it on YouTube later. Next speaker, Vivian Lund.
Vivian Lund, Halid Avenue. And I just came to thank you. I understand from talking to the mayor today that there has already been some comment made by Alderman that they would like to make sure we have an extra special celebration next year for our 250th country's birthday. And I just want to encourage you and any of you that we can encourage to participate in planning and fundraising in order to have a super celebration. So I presented a plan to the, to the mayor that we've been talking about a little bit with the Friends of the Fourth. But the Friends of the Fourth cannot do this by themselves. I mean, they can't take this project on. This Fourth of July, we again had to dip into our reserves in order to pay all the bills for our celebration this year. Our attendance was down somewhat, well, quite a bit. I'm afraid too many people thought the park was, was not going to be ready for us to celebrate. And it was in very good condition, all things considered. And so we had a, we had a wonderful event. And those of us who did it were very happy with it. But, you know, we just cannot take on something that's bigger than what we can do. So I, I'm encouraging the city, and I certainly don't mean the city employees, the city, to help us in this effort. And, and if there are people in the community that would like to join just for the fundraising, we feel if we could generate $50,000, that would certainly give us additional things that we could do as part of the whole celebration that would make it a super 250 Fourth of July celebration. So I just, and anyone who might be listening or watching this, we need people from the community that are, that would be interested in helping with this effort. We need, we know we want to do a celebration, but we need help if it's going to be a super one. So thank you for listening to this. And I know the mayor is enthusiastic, and I know John and JT have already put their two cents in and somebody over here. But I just, you know, it is something that we'll need, we want to do. And looking forward to being here for the party. I love parties.
Don't we all? Yeah, and anybody listening and everybody here, if you talk to a friend or a neighbor and they said they had a great time at the Fourth, say, well, do you want to have a good time next year? You know, go online, just type in Friends of the Fourth, Warrenville. It'll take you right to the city website. And there's a sequence of events that it says, like, summer days and what have you. One of them is Fourth of July. If you click on that, you can find a link to the Friends of the Fourth. You can, you can volunteer and you can donate. There's a PayPal link, so I encourage everybody to push that as we go forward. And I'm sure the Friends of the Fourth will come up with some ideas for raffles and things in the coming months. But the more we can all encourage people to get to it, the better off everybody will be, and the more we can have a great party next year. Rick Giezer.
Good evening. My name is Rick Giezer, and I am the new Forest Preserve Commissioner for this area, for District Six. And I just wanted to stop by today, introduce myself, and give you an update on some of the projects and some of the events that are going on in the forest that relate to Warrenville, and maybe the residents of Warrenville might be interested. The first thing I'm going to talk about was a bit of a passion project for me as a, as a fan of history. You live in Warrenville, so you may already know this information, but the general public did not know this. But I was able to rediscover, I will say that, rediscover, that Martin Luther King did indeed speak in Warrenville on July 20, or June 23rd, 1967, on the property of the Senegal, which is now part of Blackwell Forest Preserve. Concerning that, the Forest Preserve would like to, as we're doing projects there with the Senegal Bridge, and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a moment, we would like to put some signage up there to honor that moment, maybe a little information about the Senegal as well with informational signage. So, and the other thing I'd like to say about that is that one of the, the things that I thought was so interesting about finding this information out is that nobody seemed to know that it had taken place. I'm 61 years old and have lived in DuPage County most of my life and had never heard that. Yes, sir. Oh, oh, I thought you were, okay. And feel free, if somebody has a question along the way, please feel free, unless that's out of, out of order. That I had never heard this, and when I brought it up to the local, to the DuPage County Martin Luther King breakfast people, they were like, no, he, they only, he only spoke in Naperville. I'm like, no? He also spoke in Warrenville. And, and, and so hopefully, we'll be able to, and maybe people are watching this, they will go through their father's, mother's, grandparents' belongings at some point and go, why, why is there a diary in here talking about Martin Luther King? Why is there info? So I would love to, love to gather some additional information. And I know the folks, Sarah and the folks at the Historical Museum would love to have that information as well. Speaking of the Senegal, as I was knocking on doors throughout the years, everyone wanted to know about the Senegal Bridge. What is the Forest Preserve going to do about the Senegal Bridge? Senegal Bridge, Senegal Bridge. I have fond memories as a child visiting the Senegal. My mother would go there for, for mother's retreats and drag the kids, and we would wander the grounds. And we, we have been awarded a $1.06 million grant through the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. And this will help us strengthen our regional trail. We're going to work on fixing that bridge, because right now, vehicles cannot go over it. It's just deteriorating too much. It's a 100-year-old-plus bridge. And we're going to work on that so vehicles can again go over that, as well as pedestrians. And it, it's going to be a $2.2 million project. 300 of the, 300,000 has come from the Federal Transportation Department. We've been assured that we will get that money. And 250 is from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The engineering is set to begin this year, and construction is expected to begin in 2027. Also, beginning today, the Senegal, the Senegal Trail has been closed to visitors. That is the trail that goes across the Spring Brook. We're, we're going to be, begin doing erosion control work along the Spring Brook. And so that will be closed through the fall of, of 2026, or 2025, excuse me. Another thing that happens within your confines is that the Natural Resources and Grounds Maintenance Building, we broke ground on this facility on Mack Road in early June. The mayor was, was there. It'll be a new 112,000-square-foot facility. It's estimated to cost between $35 and $40 million, and it's been funded through the sale of bonds. It's anticipated to be completed in February of 2027. And if you're a fan of trails, something people have always been asking me about, trails, trails, the West Branch River Trail, which though technically is not in Warrenville, but it will connect the west DuPage Woods with Blackwell, with a bridge over Roosevelt Road. We have finalized our final property, and we are expected to, to do the bid letting. IDOT will be doing that, and construction is planned to begin in 2026. And then Herick Lake is completing our, an updated master plan, and restoration work continues. If you have any questions for me or about the forest or how it relates to you, I would love to, love to talk to you about that, and, and I can attend any meetings that, that you need me to. So, thank you very much. If there's any questions, I can answer, or you can send me something if you're interested. All right, thank you.
I, I knew about.
You're out of order. I'm sorry.
I wasn't there. I wasn't at the event.
Yeah. Oh, were you in the paper?
Well, our little Warrenville paper.
Oh, okay. I did not, I have not seen.
Rick, you should pull her aside and have a chat.
I, I, I was talking to her just yesterday at, at an event we were at, so. Well, thank you very much.
Rick, hold on a second. Bill?
Yeah, I was just curious if you have any thoughts on the design or the replacement of the Senegal Bridge. It was a nice old wooden bridge. I know those things deteriorate and can't support heavy vehicles, but with the flagstone supports and just the wooden design of it, it was kind of a flashy-looking bridge until it broke down. And I just hope that the Forest Preserve looks into some, you know, qual, high-quality aesthetic replacement for the.
And I agree with you.
Thank you.
Alderman, I agree, and we are looking into design right now. The Forest Preserve has had a recent history of, of trying to replicate the designs of bridges at Hidden Lake, which is just north of Morton Arboretum. We redid what is known as the oldest bridge in, in the county, apparently. And that's been receiving several engineering awards and is now up for an international award as well. So it may not be identical, but we're going to, I, I'm going to advocate for, to, to making it aesthetically similar. And I'm told that the pillars at both, you know, the, on both sides of the banks can be replicated, if not with the original bricks, in, in a, in a similar fashion.
Fantastic. Thank you for your consideration of that. Really appreciate it.
Certainly, certainly.
Treasure?
Where would a vehicle that crosses the Senegal Bridge go?
Well, that would, it would be more for emergency vehicles, yes. Because at that point, there's really no air, I mean, you can go through the trail, I guess, off of, it's, it's Batavia, right across from the post office there. You could, you could enter that way, but if, if, if emergency vehicles needed to get in there. That's one of the, one of the things we, I've been told. It needs to be, to have emergency vehicles.
I think Alderman Widener has some experience.
Yeah, I'm an avid trail user, and one of the other great things Forest Preserve does is they groom the trails for snowshoeing and cross-country skiing. And there's quite a labyrinth of trails that connect in and around Blackwell to Herick Lake to St. James Farm. And they utilize their grooming equipment to kind of soften down this, or push down the snow so that it allows access not only for cross-country skiers and snowshoers, but also dog walkers and pedestrians.
Well, I think I understand his point. Wow.
Other questions?
Why spend the money, I guess?
Any other questions? Thank you, Rick. We appreciate you coming out.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Official and staff comments? I have nothing to add. Clerk? Treasure?
No, thanks.
Alderman? Widener, Alderman Widener?
I'm probably taking more than my fair share of time this evening with my, my comments, but I'm sure everybody remembers a couple of weeks ago the Warrenville Multicultural Festival took place, and the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission invited people to answer just a simple but powerful question. And the question was, what's the key to feeling welcome in Warrenville or in your community? And a lot of people responded, young and old. We got a wide spectrum of, of answers. And we wrote them down, and we put them on paper keys on this large door display that was there at the festival. And we expected a wide range of answers, but we got was something that was nearly unanimous. And people were saying that what they liked most and what made them feel part of the community was a smile, a wave, or someone saying hello. It was as simple as that. And people obviously just want to be acknowledged and be seen and feel like they belong. And so that moment inspired Chairperson Megan to build a campaign around that idea. And exactly that kind of celebration of a smile, a wave, and repeat kind of is the Warrenville way. And so that program is going to be launched on National Night Out, which is coming up on Tuesday, August 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And people will be able to pick up vinyl decals and kindness challenge kits and invitations for families and businesses and individuals to participate. But this is the kind of program, you don't need any materials. You can just see somebody on the street, smile and wave and repeat. So I encourage everybody to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Other Alderman? JP?
No, just want to thank Amy and the little event they put on today, or Saturday. It was very nice. Liked to see all the business people there and got to meet some good people. So thank you very much.
I just want to give a shout out to the Courtyard Banquets. They organized and put that event on, so it was nice of them to do that. There are new members of the chamber, and they're going to be working on additional opportunities to engage our businesses. So we were happy to be there and look forward to more events in the future.
Excellent, thank you. Other comments or questions from Alderman? City of history? Nothing? Attorney? Thank you. All right. Next item will be the approval of an, of the agenda. Are there any items members wish to have removed? In which case, Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the July 21st, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Widener, second by Alderman Krakenberg. Any discussion? Let me read all of these items. No, sorry. Sorry, we're just approving the agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we have approval of the minutes coming up. Approval of minutes for the July 7th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting. Alderman Widener?
With the mayor's approval, I'd like to bundle the approval of the minutes and make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 7th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the July 7th, 2025 City Council Closed Sessions 1, 2, and 3, and to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2025 Community Development Committee Meeting.
Second?
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the minutes are approved. Now we have the consent agenda. And I will read these first. I'll get this one these days. First item on the consent agenda, Item A, is accept the Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O 2025-32 revising the terms of the inter-fund loan to the Tax Increment Financing District Number 3 Fund from the General Fund, including a revision of the maximum amount of the loan to an amount not to exceed $5 million. Item B, accept the staff recommendation and pass Resolution R 2025-46 approving a repayment start date agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to extend the repayment start date of a brownfield revolving loan. Item C, accept staff recommendation, Resolution R 2025-47, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and DuPage County for local economic development grant funding for the construction of a pop-up market. Item D, accept the Community Development Committee recommendation, direct the city attorney to prepare and establish donation bin licensing requirements for the city, and amend the annual fee ordinance to establish a donation bin license fee. Item E, accept the Community Development Committee recommendation and direct staff to proceed with efforts to pursue private sponsorship support for the pop-up marketplace and other enhancements to Leon Schmidt Park in accordance with the procurement policy. Item F, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and direct staff to waive fees for 3S 580 River Road in an amount not to exceed $7,215. Item G, receive and file the minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held June 3rd, 2025. Item H, receive and file the minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Commission meeting held on June 10, 2025. Item I, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission meeting held on June 17, 2025. Item J, receive and file report of invoices paid up to July 16, 2025 in the amount of $18,223.62. Item K, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before August 4, 2025 in the amount of $201,333.92. And last item, L, receive and file the report of chase commercial card expenditures for the month of June 2025 in the amount of $16,768.54. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Mayor Andrew Johnson.
Second?
It's been second by Alderman Krakenberg. Any conversation or discussion, questions? Clerk Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no items on the regular agenda. There is no unfinished business, no more of it. Any new business, staff or Alderman? Then we do have a need to go into closed session. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Berry, second by Alderman Lockett. Any discussion? Clerk Clark, will you call the roll, please? Clerk Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg? Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will go into closed session. If Alderman Lockett, you want to make a motion to go into adjourn?
Oh, you don't need to adjourn now.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. My apologies. We do not anticipate any action after closed session, so we will now move into closed session. Thank you very much, everyone.